Says, you know, lesses or sublesses. But it doesn't, the definition of operator means the proprietor of any dwelling, lodging, or sleeping accommodations offered as a short-term rental, whether in the capacity of owner, lessy, sublessy, mortgage and possession, licensee, or any other possessory capacity, or as defined in the code, which is the definition I just read you. So, you know, the definition of operator, who would, you know, we would, basically, they're on-site, you know, owner occupied, whether in the capacity of operator or the actually owner, then those persons, in my opinion, wouldn't be subject to the limit.
I don't understand how a lessy, a sublessy, mortgage and possession, none of that are probably going to be there all the time, right? I mean, we don't have realtors that have several different ones?
Well, there's, there's different provisions for real estate agents. If you look at, if you look in the state code, section two, it says, "No ordinance shall require a person to register if such person is licensed by the real estate board or is a property owner who is represented by a real estate licensee, registered pursuant to the Virginia Real Estate Timeshare Act, licensed or registered with the Department of Health related to the provision of room or space for lodging, or licensed or registered with the locality related to the rental and management of real property, including licensed real estate professionals, hotels, motels, campgrounds, and bed and breakfast establishments."
So, they would not have to register?
A real estate agent would not.
As a licensed real estate agent, you could have four or five short-term rentals, and there's no registration for them?
Exactly, because the state code doesn't allow us to require it.
I hear you.
Yes, ma'am. No, you're interpreting it exactly correct.
Okay. I just realized something, this has nothing to do with what we're doing right now, because we're going to have a public hearing on this. At number four, we did not have a public hearing, so what should we do? Got so carried away on signs that we forgot, I forgot to do it. I'm sorry, I apologize.
We can...
Honored, you asked for a public comment.
I think we did on three.
And four?
I think we, but on four, I think we skipped it.
Yeah, I think you...
I think that you did briefly.
You think you did?
Nobody was here, and so you shut it down right after you opened it.
All right, good.
I think you covered.
Because I, I thought, we've had so many, I thought, oh, me nightmare, I haven't done this one. Okay, so, thank you very much for keeping track of me. Okay, so, we are going to go ahead and let's, let's open this one, and that way, we're, we're, we're good. All right, on the last thing, adoption of appendix to short-term rentals, we will open the public hearing, we will formally shut it down, because there's no one left here in the audience, period. Okay, so, we are correct. Okay, so, if we have a motion at this time, if all questions have been asked, we have a motion to accept the adoption of the appendix E short-term rentals, the city of Pecosa. As written.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Now, take the vote.
Would you like your commissioner to say it?
Well, she's not left for good. She is coming back?
Well, she left her things here.
She left her stuff, okay, because I know at one point, she had said she might have to leave early. I didn't know if she'd taken her things. I see her cup. Well, I think we could wait for, like, if it doesn't take too long, we can, we can do it.
Can I, I made a mistake earlier on a vote, going back to February 22nd minutes. I think I said aye. I wasn't on the board at that time, so that should have been an abstain for me.
So, you can vote, as long as you've read the minutes?
Right. I probably did, but I wasn't here physically.
Do you need a quizzymon, whether that amount you retained?
Oh, we would have to reopen that. And there was two abstentions on that. I think, I think you were one of them.
Just want to make sure it's correct.
We're okay. Okay. Yeah, as long as you read the, the minutes and reviewed the minutes, then you are authorized to vote on the minutes.
Start the whole night over, George.
That's right. Start at the top.
Okay, so, now, we're all back, back here, and we're all ready to take the vote.
We have a motion seconded for appendix E short-term rentals to be adopted, and we are ready to vote. Aye.
Whichever.
Thank God, get you up to speed.
Aye, aye, yes.
So, are you, Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber?
Aye.
The recommendation for the adoption?
Excellent. Okay, so, the last thing here, we have to take up the election of officers, and I think, Thomas, you probably, or Wally, can explain that?
Sure.
And then we can...
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We do try and elect annually in July, but we had quite a summer break this year, and saying as we didn't have a quorum last time, the election of officers is tonight. I think it's more appropriate for the board to discuss their officers, who will serve through July of '25 or the meeting thereafter, but it is our staff recommendation that Kathy Knowles be appointed the clerk of the board. Kathy, if you have not met her, is our new administrative assistant, and she will be assuming a role as clerk, and because we're not letting her get away full-time, we recommend that Laura Newsbe be appointed as deputy clerk, whether she wants to be or not. But that's our staff recommendation for clerks going into next July.
Let me just mention one thing. I know that this is Schreiber's last meeting?
Is it?
Your last meeting?
My term is...
And I believe it's Ms. Grebel's last meeting as well. We'll certainly miss both of you all, but I only mention that, is that obviously...
They however can, in their last meeting, offer up somebody else to assume the role of chair and vice chair.
Yes, they can.
So, with that said, I guess we'll take nominations. I nominate Heather to... And I, and we can do it as a blanket, can't we?
You, you can, as long as no member wants to abstain on their own appointment. If you do them all together, everyone would have to vote either in the affirmative or not.
Because I know we have the two, the clerks.
If you want to bifurcate the clerk, I mean, the chair and vice chair appointments, and then appoint the clerks in one, you can do that.
Who are you nominating for vice chair? We have a nomination for a vice chair.
We can, if, we can, since you do have a motion for chair, we can call the role on the motion for chair, and then have a separate for vice chair. You do have a motion on the floor.
All right, well, do we have a second? We have a second for Heather Schott for chairman. All right, and now, we'll take the vote.
Does Heather get to go first? Did you know about this?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schott?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, so, now, do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate Christine.
I second that.
Can we have a public discussion, please?
You, you can, you can...
I would like to respectfully ask maybe another year, with what I have on my plate right now, I, I just don't have the bandwidth. I appreciate it, and not...
Say it up front.
I've gotten good at saying it lately, so I have to.
You have to. So, um...
If you want to withdraw your nomination, then...
I withdraw my nomination.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have other nomination for vice chair?
Well, I would like to know if any of the remainders would like to be. I mean, who?
How about Mr. Geisinger?
I think it takes, it takes a lot of time and effort, you know, to do this, and depending on what's going on, you know, you know whether or not you have the time to do it.
Vice chair is, is kind of a learning position, and it's, you know, you're there, it's a backup. Important for you to attend every meeting, but you sometimes have to. Geisinger, if he would take it, because he's sort of next, I guess, the next longest-serving member, we'll be getting some new members, two new members, hopefully. All right, I've nominated him as...
I'll second that.
All right, we'll go ahead and take the, take the vote on that.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Absolutely, aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schott?
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber?
Aye.
All right, and then now, can we do the clerks?
You can do the clerks.
Together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have a motion to nominate the two clerks that have been recommended by the planning department?
I will make the motion for the two clerks.
And I will, and I will second your motion.
All right, we can take the vote on that.
Or we can't get rid of it yet.
I mean, can I have a vote on that?
No.
All right, so, Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Motion, right?
Motioned.
And then, all right, Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schott?
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber?
Aye.
All right, done, we have communications and correspondence from the planning department.
Um, we can go first, unless you'd like to go first, or the planning commission would like to go first. All right, the first thing, I want to just get clarification on, is the direction from you tonight for details and information needed before the December 2nd reconsideration, or continued consideration of the conditional use permit. I have noise levels, you've tasked staff with trying to identify what an appropriate decibel level would be, and we're, we'll have to determine where that will be measured from, whether it's the property line or some point of the right-of-way, we will discuss that internally, that'll be our 8:30 conversation tomorrow.
Thomas, just from the data that was provided, it looks like there's very little, those quantities are very, not very affected by the distance, I mean...
Right, and they weren't...
Maybe that's not as critical than...
Well, and I'm trying to, through my mountains of paper, trying to relocate that document. Thank you, sir. But, you know, these were provided to staff today. If I told you we had adequate time to read and digest all four, I'd be telling you a lie. But, you know, you just look at these face value, one of these, there were six shooters while they measured the decibel level. They were shooting nine-millimeter handguns. Well, and the second, there was one shooter, shooting an AR-15. The third was a 50-caliber rifle. The fourth was four shooters. So, you know, there are, I will say, an exponential amount of variables as to how to measure decibel noise, or, and noise levels from the use. And there's no caliber restriction, condition, or offered. So, we will be tasked with working in conjunction with the applicant and Action Target, who's a company he's contracted, at least, we believe, to do the work on, you know, where they see this based on previous projects, and the level that we're looking for. And I can tell you that that level will be recommended from us, what more or less the existing level in this district, being on City Hall Avenue, is. And that's probably on any given day, most hours, between 45 and 55 decibels. So, I think you can anticipate a number in that range, if it is achievable.
That seems reasonable.
I've been around several gun, you know, shot in a couple of different areas, and I've yet to hear any...
Right. Right, and it's, like I say, not necessarily something we anticipate, but that is not something we want to deal with on the back end of this project. It's not fair to the citizens or, or the applicant. So, we will bring...
There's a lot of security.
Right, and so, we'll bring something more concrete to you in December, working off the material we were provided.
Sound test, every one of these is from Colorado and Utah.
Right.
Their geography is very different than ours.
That's a fantastic point.
And, you know, high elevation, mountainous, things like that.
Right.
I, I just was flipping through that when you were mentioning that, and a Radio Shack digital handheld meter, you know, how accurate is that?
Right, well, what we will do over the next few weeks is work with the applicant and the folks he has contracted to, to do the work, and engineering and development for him, to, to establish criteria, like I say, that's workable, but not only for the operation, but more importantly, our citizens. So, we'll, we'll have that prepared for you in December.
Curious about that elevation as well, you know, I mean, the elevation, whether or not they can actually get that entire long range underground, because if they can't, that changes the whole mission.
Well, and that's something, that's my third point I took from your direction, was, you know, elevation being appearance, but the elevation being height, and if the intention is to fill, and rather than having a basement sub the current grade, is different than 10-foot first stories surrounded by dirt, and now, we take the height from the new dirt to the top of the new building. So, that's something that we're going to work on. That's a pretty difficult conversation. There are some other implications there from, from different parts of the city code, but, but we'll try and bring something to you to address that, or, you know, more or less alleviate that concern, and if we have to, you know, this is a conditional use permit, it's something permitted by right, by, you know, what is existing in the code. You don't have to recommend approval at all. So, my thoughts just of now is, is maybe we work on a condition regarding the height that would more or less, if he brings in, bill would, if, if he brings in eight feet of fill, maybe we take that from the height allowed, something of that nature, so that it's not towering over the rest of the district, setting an elevation greater than, than surrounding uses. So, we'll, we'll work on that.
I thought it was interesting that he, he did sort of say something that I thought was interesting, taking an, an older building and renovate, making it usable as a, it's more difficult, of course, to insulate and, and make it soundproof. And I was thinking, maybe he could get something from, this is a new, this is a new structure, which he said would be more soundproof, because it's built with different specs. Maybe he could get something from some of these people, build the buildings, right, some specs from the...
This one on Fortman Road that's been repurposed.
Well, that one's been repurposed, but in this case, it would be a new structure.
It would be interesting to know what the sound levels are on it.
Yeah.
Having been repurposed, because, like, the, the air zones are 65, 70, and 75 decibels, which is considered a high noise level. 65 being the, you know, the minimum of high noise level, if you're going, I don't know if, because it has building restrictions for noise levels or not, but 75 is rather high still.
I'd like to know, though, the new ones, the new, the new building, what the specs on that would be, and what they expect from the new structure.
Well, and that's...
Because that would be relevant, I mean, you know...
That, that's what we'll work on them with. You know, we will convey our expectation and understand from them, given the proposal, if, if it's something they can achieve or not.
It's an engineering problem.
Right, it's an engineering problem, and, you know, they, folks much smarter than I that, you know, do this on a daily basis, will be the ones we seek those answers from.
And speaking of folks much smarter than I, I mean, the environmental impact, you raise land eight feet, guess where all the runoff's going? The lowest point next to it?
Well, we...
City Hall, public safety, I mean, you can't just build up one part of...
We have the code to, we will prevent that, I mean, yeah, the, the...
That's what we're...
Impact to adjacent properties.
Especially that wasn't looked at on the big storage building. So, I think that that is a good example of what the city needs to pay attention to.
Right.
Because that is a massive building that practically covers the lot, and the runoff is going down towards adjacent blocks. So, really, it's definitely something that should be looked at. I mean, the proposal is to almost take up a whole lot over here. And if he raises it eight feet, you're right, just like...
And you already flood over in that parking lot.
Pardon?
You already flooded in that parking lot.
Why not?
I've been over there.
He is, that, that building is practically on the line, I don't think it's more than 10 feet off the line, if it's that much. And I don't think that was taken into account at all, that was going to occur from a building that had to, so, I think that's a good lesson learned, that it not only does not, it does not fit with adjoining properties, and is clearly, clearly out of place. Not that we didn't, not that it couldn't have been brought somewhere else, but the record that I was totally against it, and, well, yeah, exactly, we were, we were all totally against it, and yet, somehow, the council voted unanimously to approve that, but...
The issues that it is creating, what are the uses for that?
I do want to, if I can, make sure I get through the rest of these details, the direction, SOT, the one we just spoke about, the dimension, and, you know, the heights of, of both phases. Piggybacking on that is the phasing specifically, from the information provided this morning, do we want to benchmark a certain level of development by certain dates, be it, you know, phase, he's proposing as phase one completed by a certain date, phase two completed by a certain date. That's, again, conversations we'll have with the applicant. The concepts given today, he expressed, were to scale, so, what I will do over the next few weeks is condense the application to the latest and greatest, being what was given to us literally this morning at, like, quarter to 11:00. So, we'll trim this to, to the most relevant information we have. And then, of course, the last one here was another noise comment, which I think we've addressed. Other than that, unless there's any other guidance, that's what we'll work on, but you'll reconsider, or continue to consider that at your December 2nd meeting, unless, yes, sir?
I don't think you mentioned traffic, and I don't think traffic is going to be an issue, but I don't think we should just assume it's not either.
Right, well, we, like I said, we don't anticipate a traffic issue.
Maybe that was covered in the, in the recommendations that were already there.
Well, it was covered, you know, but with the uses specifically, we don't anticipate a traffic issue. None of them are high-traffic generators, none of the uses proposed, and we do have the authority in the VC code, where if trips exceed, you know, 75 trips at peak hours, then we can require a traffic impact study. So, once we get through this process, once we have a fully-prepared development plan and can analyze, okay, how many people do you have working at your busiest hour? How many, you know, what, how many square feet of retail space is proposed? How many people will you have here in your professional office space? Once we know how many people will be there working, and how many people we can calculate will be there frequenting the space available, then we will be able to determine whether or not traffic impact study is needed.
Are you going to put any regulations on the time opening and closing?
I, it wasn't something I had considered, given the applicant, obviously, his desire is that it is readily available, and, you know, certain persons who have memberships or law enforcement, so be it. If that's something the planning commission wants to consider, you know, it's a certain conversation we can have.
Thomas, is this a... I'm sorry, this, that's got to be a conversation. We are looking at an area that is City Hall and Library, that has very finite hours to serve our community, and then you have our residents, really, across the parking lot. So, to not only, you know, noise is, I mean, whether it's offered or whatever, I mean, whether there's some noise, knows noise, but to be putting in a 24-hour business in this area that isn't by right for business to be here, I, I think it's got to be part of the discussion, because you're going to have people, and our applicant stood up here and said, "I guarantee you, we have very low crime in Pecosa, and I guarantee you that the people coming in are safe with their firearms," and I'd like to see the quantification and qualification of those comments, because there are people other than those in Pecosa that are going to be using this proposed business, so I wonder how he can guarantee those items.
Well, I, I mean, I'll work with the applicant.
So, from a safety issue, how, how, you know, that's, that's an aspect too, that did not get brought up tonight to that extent.
I will work with the applicant if there are some hours of operation to be, you know, centered, but it'll likely be, you know, what he offers in a discussion you all will continue in December.
That's why I think traffic's important. If you have traffic coming at 24 hours a day, no matter what that is, with lights coming down there in light, those residential areas, you know, yes, do lights happen? Yes, of course, but if you have a large number of people traveling down there, because they, you know, it's, it would be a good opportunity, I understand that, but just some parameters.
I mean, because I, I think the, being open to...
I wouldn't either. Work shifts.
Other ones, I don't know how you quantify who they are.
Whoever pays the money is...
Yeah, just because they're rich doesn't mean they're...
24-hour access.
So, as far as like VIP stuff.
Membership only, or is it open to anybody?
No, it's membership.
I, I think it's a major component of his business plan, if you look at it, it's, you know, membership-based, but I, I assume you'll be able to access, even if you're not a, you know, I'll say dues-paying member, that, I'm assuming.
I wonder, the one up in York County, is anyone, have you all looked into any of the local ones around, just to kind of monitor and see what they do?
Lafayette, and I spoke with Ms. Schreiber today about Lafayette. I spoke with Ms. Shriver today about Lafayette. It's hard to compare, honestly, because it's outdoors, I mean.
And it's indoor.
And they have an indoor component, but it's so different than the proposal, there, I mean, it's really not similar enough at all to really draw any comparison.
Is that the one that you hear them shooting, if you take, if you go up to the York County dump up there?
Yes. Yes. Anyways, I don't want to cut your discussion short, but we'll, we'll work.
You have to take a trip.
What's that?
Maybe you have to take a trip somewhere, find out.
Yeah, I mean, there are some around, like I say, I don't think any to the scale proposed, so I'm not sure how fruitful it would be, but something we can consider. But we'll work on these things to include possible conditioned hours of operation, but I'll end with, we will miss both of you leaving. Ms. Grebel, I haven't had the opportunity to work with as long as I have Ms. Shriver, and it's been a real pleasure, and your decades of service to this city have not gone unnoticed, and, you know, your impacts are felt on a lot of the things that make the city what it is, so I appreciate you personally and professionally, and we'll miss you.
Thank you, I'll miss you. Absolutely, 100%.
I like the echo of Thomas's comments about you and Ms. Gre, we certainly will miss you.
Y'all too. May see y'all on the other side.
You'll miss us for a day.
Logistical question related to that, actually, so, right now, there's probably a 90% better or better chance that I'm going to be out of the country on December 2nd, so I wish I would be here to vote, I don't think I will be.
I'm out of country.
And with two of them being gone, and so I think two new members are going to be tempted to abstain from that vote maybe, or.
I think it's, I believe it's the intention for members to be appointed in November. If not, if we won't have a quorum, then we will work with the applicant to postpone until January, and we'll re-advertise, we'll send all the legal notices back out, so we will more or less treat it.
Handle it.
As a new hearing, yeah, it can be handled if we won't have a quorum in December, but do, you know, let us know as soon as you can, if you can or cannot attend, and if we have some new members on board, then, you know, hopefully, we can get a quorum either way. If not, we can handle that.
You're not going to be here either, you said?
I'm going to be out of country too.
Goodness.
Going to be late.
They'll get somebody.
Yeah, I mean, if the other three can attend and the two new members can attend, then we would obviously have a quorum.
Are you not going to vote on that?
They might not have the background, is what I was saying, of what happened tonight.
Well, what we will do with two new members appointed next month is, obviously, anyone be able to watch this tomorrow, but we will, you know, as we did with all of you in that kind of initial, here's what Planning Commission does, we will debrief them very detailed and extensively on this hearing, and we will take their concerns into consideration. Well, if there's something they'd like to see in the mission, we'll include it.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to say, it's an honor for me to be a part of the Planning Commission, and I look forward to serving the city, the citizens, as we move forward. So, sorry I didn't get to work with you more.
A pleasure.
Good luck to you.
Down on that end, anybody down?
I'd just like to say I've enjoyed working with each of you, and I will miss it, but I just, personal obligations and reorder priorities just made it, it's just made it difficult for me, so I just felt like the best thing to do, but I appreciate all of y'all's cooperation and.
But you shook your head, you're good. Nothing.
I just want to thank you both for your years of service, and I want to thank my, you know, my Planning Commission cohort for electing me as the chairperson and, you know, give me a call if you need me, if I'm available, and I'm excited about it. So, thank you, thank you to Thomas and Wally, and Laura and Andy.
That would be great.
Well, lastly, I will say that I've enjoyed working with all of you, and Libby, I'm sorry to see you go. Libby has always brought a lot of interesting questions to things, and her experience, her field, has really brought a. Place you with someone with your, with your knowledge. I just will say briefly, in light of the time, tonight is getting late, I could say a million things.
Well, go ahead, we can sleep here.
24 years is a long time to serve, I've seen a lot of changes, most of them, I think, are pretty good, because, you know, it's a hard, hard thing to do, serve on Planning Commission, because you have to follow certain guidelines, you, your heart wants to go, I said many a time, my heart wanted to go, sometimes for people that come before us with something that they like, would like to do, I mean, but we have certain things that we can't do, and we have to sometimes say we can't. But overall, I've enjoyed it, it's been an education for me, I think I've learned a great deal, and it has been an honor and a pleasure to, in some way, serve the citizens of the community that I was, I've been raised in all my life, so I feel like I have tried to give something back, hope it's been beneficial. A lot of the people I've served with, when I came on, when I came on Planning Commission, are long gone, one of which was Pelham Phillips, he was chairman, and Walt Hill was the co-chair. And I was a newbie totally, Pelham kind of took me under his wing, and he filled me in on a lot of things. Pelham was a old native Pecosanite, kind of sat in his way, good guy. Walt, unfortunately, passed away unexpectedly, so I had, I was elected Vice Chair, and from then on, it progressed, and I've enjoyed it, it's been a, I've worked with some really nice people over the years, I can't name them all, one which I will name, though, is Vicky Diggs. Vicky has saved my hide many a time, sitting next to me, she was my, she was really a great one to have on as our clerk. And also, of course, the Planning Department, we had Debbie Vest and Karen Holloway, we've had some great people, and Jody Hollensworth, I think about him, Jody was really good. And then we have Thomas and Wally, who are now a part of the planning, planning of our city and the leaders of our planning. So, I wish you all the best and hope you continue to do as good a job as has been done in the past. Great, a great group to work with, and I hope you get two new members that will replace us and do just as fine a job as they can do. And with that, it's 10 o'clock, it's time to go home, and I'm going to do the gavel tonight, we're done.
I'll tell Vicky to watch that, since she works.
Me now. Yeah, Vicky, Vicky.
And I've heard her talk, Pelham Phillips, I've heard her.